Sounds like somebody's in the plane.
Oh, okay.
If we have someone, the North East is Vice Mayor. Twelve if we have Russell here. We've got a staff.
No, but I'm no, but I'm listening.
We gotta be ready when that day comes. Get it all.
All right, let's see. They're ready to get started.
Traffic Safety Action Plan. Officer is on the streets today.
If you're ready, I'm ready. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here this afternoon. And first on our agenda this afternoon is a discussion of our traffic safety action plan that the city's been working on for several years. And really, this came about, really started working on this heavily in 2021. And today, we wanted to give you an update, just go through some of the steps that we've taken and some projects that we're continuing to work on. And we'll be providing these periodically from this point forward, just as a reminder to you all and to the community about some of the work that we're doing related to traffic safety within the city. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Clint Link, who is our Director of Engineering Services, and Nick DePalma, who's one of our Assistant City Engineers. And they will present today. So Clint, Nick.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Council. This is really just an update. And as Shannon mentioned, we'll be coming back periodically to give you more updates, but not really asking for any action or decisions from the council today, but just to give you all an update. But really, Nick's gonna, Nick's been working really hard on this plan for the last few years, been coordinating closely with key departments from emergency services to planning to our mobility coordinator, Kalen Owens, to Green Link, to develop, really what we're looking at is all about just improving safety along our roads. So we're going to highlight some of the key strategies that we have identified that we want to focus on on the streets within the city. We all know Greenville's growing. We know we're seeing a lot more traffic on the road, vehicular traffic. Also seen a lot more just need and desire for active transportation with our bikes and our pedestrians and scooters running around town. So really, we're looking for our roads to function safely for all these different users of the road. And we've got some, what we feel like are key strategies of how we can can address that need. Ultimately, we're looking to eliminate fatalities. That's the ultimate goal, is to eliminate fatalities and reduce the severity of accidents when they do occur. So we think these are some good strategies. These will be some of our guiding principles as we prepare our capital improvement project recommendations. But also, it goes into our just everyday maintenance of our roads, the construction of our roads and the design of the roads. So with that, and we'll let Nick take it from here, go through the plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. So the Traffic Safety Action Plan, or TSAT, that sometimes you'll hear us call it now, is something that I've been here for nine years at the city. And then somewhere or another, I've been kind of working on some sort of plan to lead us to this. So I started with Intersection Safety Master Plan for some of y'all that were around back then. We related several key intersections to the city, the Downtown Traffic Master Plan, and more recently, the Pedestrian Safety Study. So a lot of staff has worked on these plans over the years, from planning to St. Andrews Office, to Green Link, to Mobility Coordinator. We've had a lot of help with this. And it's really been a great process to see come along. So as Clint mentioned, we've been working on a plan that would look at the growth in the city. Two important pieces to that are reducing congestion on the roadways, but also making sure that everyone arrives safe at their destination, regardless of what mode of transportation they're using. So one key to this plan is we want to achieve zero traffic-related deaths on our roadways. Obviously, that's a lofty goal. But the strategies that we're presenting here are things that we're going to be implementing and have been implementing on all of our projects moving forward to help us get there. So we understand that distracted driving mistakes will happen on the roadways. We think that these strategies will help us design the roadways and improve the roadways in a way that those mistakes and those crashes aren't necessarily fatal or high injury. So that's kind of what we're looking at. You will see, obviously, that we focus a lot in the public safety and mobility and transportation area of your council priorities. But as I go through all seven of these strategies, we actually hit every single one of these priorities. So the first thing we looked at is we combed over lots of data over the last 10, 15 years to look at where can we focus our resources in a logical manner that will help us optimize how we're spending our money. And one key thing to note that we found was that in the last five years, 41% of all injury and fatal crashes in our city occurred on just under 5% of miles of roadway. So you can, that's an easy stat to look at and say, well, if we focus our resources on those key areas, then that's a large chunk of those high injury, more serious crashes that we can prevent. And you'll see a lot of those roadways are exactly what you expect. There are your academies, Stone, Pleasantburg, Lawrence, Ferris, Augusta, they're everything. It's exactly what you would expect those roadways to be. So there's a lot of information on this slide. You don't have to look into it too closely. Just look at, this is two examples of some of those high injury networks. This would be Lawrence Road and Pleasantburg Drive. So one thing I wanted to show you here is we've kind of mapped out where those high incident instances of crashes happen. And one thing to point out is that these areas that are highlighted here directly coincide with our efforts on the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan that we're actually implementing right now with the state earmark funds. So Phase One actually just wrapped up recently, that worked on both Pleasantburg and Lawrence Road, where we added, repaired or added over 180 ramps and high-visibility crosswalks along both corridors. So it's kind of, it's important to know that while there's a lot more to do on these roadways, we're already looking at them. We're already taking steps towards improving safety on them and in these key areas. Another thing to note is that Lawrence Road corridor, when you get to the darker orange section, that's the section we're looking at where we've been adding the concrete medians recently. So concrete medians access management is another key piece to roadway safety.
What time period is the crash data?
So we looked back 10 years, 15 years for some of it. But that specific stat that you saw, 41%, was the last five years. So second strategy, and this is something that is very important to us, is establishing slower speeds. So that could be through the traffic calming program. There's lots of different ways that we can get there. But that, that little graphic to the left is something that I want to call attention to. That's important for our corridors, but it's also important for our neighborhoods. So you'll see that essentially, at different speeds, when you increase your speed by just 10 miles an hour, it increases your possibility of, if there's a crash, that crash will be fatal almost exponentially. So an example that we can use is the Verde Boulevard project that we did. If you're a pedestrian and you're crossing Verde Boulevard at Rocky Slope, which is a signalized intersection, that roadway is posted at 40 miles an hour. So if it's a green light and you're trying to cross the road, or there's a distracted driver and they don't see the red light, they're traveling at 40-plus miles an hour. That's an 80% chance that that crash could result in a fatality. Move down the road to parallel parkway and where there's a roundabout, and there are raised medians that slow down traffic, the speed through that section is 20 miles an hour. So in the instance where a pedestrian is hit by a vehicle there, your likelihood that that's going to result in a fatality is reduced all the way down to 10%. So that's just one example of how traffic calming measures roundabouts. Physical infrastructure on the roadway can prevent serious injury or fatality when there is a crash or when there is an incident. So that's one of the things that we're looking at with all our projects moving forward. Strategy three is another important piece that we've been looking at very heavily recently. So this is managing roadway access. So if you've written up one of our corridors, you will notice that there are a very high amount of access points to almost every property. So when you look at what the federal highway suggests for where you should be to be in a safe way, a safe area, you're looking at less than 20 driveways or access points on an urban arterial. If you look in the bottom right, if you look at Pleasantburg and Lawrence, you're double or more than triple that on just those two corridors. So if you're counting up conflict points or areas where you could have a crash or something happen, you're exponentially more likely to find those on Lawrence and Pleasantburg due to the sheer number of full access points on those corridors. So we have lots of stats, lots of federal statistics on why, why is it important to include some concrete medians, right-in, right-out driveways, other types of raised medians, closing access driveways. And that stat on the left there, just raised medians can reduce crashes by 47%. And closing access points can reduce them by up to 78%. So when we're, when we're going into a project and we're looking at these roadways that have all these access points and we're trying to close them, we're not just doing it for, for, you know, looks or anything. It's, it's a pure safety goal that we're trying to hit that less than 20 access points per minute. So it's important to remember, and it's also important to look at our successes. So if, if y'all remember a few years back when we had Woodruff Industrial, Woodruff Road, we used to temporarily block that off with barbell barricades during the holidays. And it was extremely successful on, from both a congestion standpoint and a safety standpoint, that we decided to make it permanent. And there was a lot of pushback from those businesses at the time. We met with them, we talked with them, we walked through the improvements. We ended up implementing the raised concrete median. And now here we are, years later, it's been a huge success, congestion's reduced, we're seeing travel times get shorter, we're seeing less crashes, and those businesses have, we've not had to do any kind of modifications to keep those businesses thriving in that area. So it's been a huge win, and that's the type of success that we were trying to replicate on the other corridors, such as Pleasantburg, Lawrence, Augusta, moving forward. So Strategy Four, I'm sure everyone is familiar with. This is essentially the pedestrian safety piece. This is where we received that $2.5 million in state earmark fund to implement the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan. Phase One is recently completed, and Phase Two is on track to start in the next few months. One piece of this is the Pendleton Street project, where we'll be addressing several items from the Small Area Plan and the Pedestrian Safety Study along almost all Pendleton. So that's a, that's a big project that we're looking forward to. It's actually about to start.
You got Woodruff of Lawrence up there. Is that the project that we're?
So that was Phase One of the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan. We're, we're wrapping up now, where we just went in and added high-visibility crosswalks, pedestrian ramps. So we implemented almost every short and a lot of the midterm solutions from the Ped Safety Action Plan to those roadways. So Strategy Five is a safer network of buffer bicycle facilities. So a lot of those recent successes are pretty, are pretty big ones, the Bridges Over Lawrence and Hayley Road. And the improvements that we're doing on Hillside right now directly tie the Overbrook Neighborhood to Swamp Rabbit Trail. We've taken some, we've had some great opportunity with our resurfacing program and being able to identify and reserve space, extra space on roadways from lane lists that were too wide, et cetera, that we're reserving for future bicycle enhancements. So maybe that, that right now, they're just their shoulders, or they're just bike lanes with buffers, and the space is now reserved for future improvements, protected bike lanes, et cetera. Another big project that we've got coming is the Bridge Over Verde Boulevard, as well as the two connections to the Swamp Rabbit Trail at Holland Park and further down Lawrence Road. So those are some projects that we're very excited about that should help further this, this goal. Strategy Six is looking at bus stop locations to protect transit riders. So right now, we're under contract on 17 bus stops throughout the city that will improve waiting areas, seating, as well as solar-powered lighting for safety after dark. Green Lake has a lot of projects coming, moving forward in the future. And as you can see up there, they've actually got a grant that's going to help them work on a large number of bus stops in the future. And then the final strategy is leveraging technology. This is, should be familiar to everybody. We just opened the TMC. We're working on getting the infrastructure to support emergency signal preemption that could reduce response times, as well as working on several different intersection and pedestrian enhancements, such as RFPs, the flashing signs, like you see at McPee and Yee-Haw, and some pedestrian hybrid signals. So one is about to go in at Augusta and Field, you know, the baseball stadium, and we've got one in the works on Stone Avenue. So those are important projects that are coming up. But also, we're in the design process to look at a Safe Streets For All piece at Ferris and Minia that sees a lot of crossings during school hours. And right now, it's, it's just got two regular signs, but we're looking at, well, how can we enhance that with, with technology?
You've got the red light vote in force. That's not, that's, that's a.
Not until state laws, not until state laws, but that's one of the, that's one of the ideas is in the future, working with legislators.
Still on our agenda, our state.
So we're, we're wrapping up. This is the last slide, I promise. So I want to, I kind of wanted to go through and highlight some of the stuff that we, we've been doing, what we've got coming up. So as I mentioned, the last two years, we've, we've been hitting some of the safety goals very hard on our projects. So some, some key stats that we've got, in the last two years, we've installed or repaired over three miles of sidewalks, 580 ramps, 600 high-visibility crosswalks, five enhanced pedestrian crossings or signals, 10 miles of bicycle lanes, and paved over 20 miles of roadway, and implemented almost three miles of lane reductions. So that's a lot of work that we've done in two years, but we have a lot more to do. So this action plan that we've been working on and for the traffic safety was a large piece in our ability to get a federal grant for a little over $2 million through Bipartisan Infrastructure Act. So this federal grant is for planning and demonstration of some quick build projects that we can go in on these high injury corridors. Lawrence and Pleasantburg are the two that have already been identified through that planning process, where we can go and we can do, we can implement some access management, other types of, you know, quick build type projects, and look at other corridors for maybe buffered bike lane, protected bike lanes, that we can prove the effectiveness of these solutions and study them, and then, again, work on, in the future, making them permanent. Another fun one that I like to show is DOT actually did a quick build in Traveler's Rest at the, a quick build roundabout in Traveler's Rest at the Walmart. So that's, that's been there for a little over a year, maybe two years. And they've actually seen a lot of success with that, with build project. So an example, in addition to that, I also want to mention, last year, or last week, we actually got, we found out that we are receiving $7.5 million in matching funds from GLDTC Fund Committee. So that's going to be a huge benefit to a lot of these, a lot of projects that go along with this. Some of the projects we had on that list that are getting done through that are Willow Street Bridge Replacement, Stone Avenue Safety Projects, Augusta Street Safety Project, several sidewalk projects, the White Oak Realignment, and a new signal at Pendleton and Texel. So that's a lot of projects that we've got coming up that we're working on. We've got a lot, a large amount of money that we're working with between the grant that we applied for and these matching funds. And we're, we're pretty excited and proud of our team that worked on getting those dollars for us.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, Mayor?
We've signed a lot of fans here. About a year ago, we did approve the concrete medians on Lawrence Road that you mentioned a moment ago. But I, I think some have already been installed, but there's several others that haven't been installed yet. Is that a funding issue?
Yeah, so the ones installed to date were through the DIB funds, which we did spend those on that section of Lawrence, as well as a section on East North Street there near Pell or East North and Pleasantburg. But yeah, so we, we were, we would, there's other opportunities, but for like Nick shows on some of these quick build projects, you can do, using much cheaper alternative with the flexible post, the linear post, you can, you can do some of this as a proof of concept or a pilot-type project, if you will.
We can, you and I talked about this before. Hope we can do the one where the double traffic lights are in front of the old DOT office on Lawrence Road.
Yeah.
The working, I'd love to see us try that out real quick.
I think we've got a concept plan, the SCDOT, right now, under review.
And, and that's also where Safe Streets For All Grant applies to Lawrence Road and Pleasantburg. So that, those, those are projects we've already identified and wanted to do. We continue to do Safe Streets For All.
Yes, Councilmember Dow. How, and this might be the core of where we pulled this from, but we've looked at traffic calming on other corridors, not spoken of today, but maybe smaller ones that, you know, were restricted, when it's an SCDOT road, we're restricted from doing some kind of traffic calming, be it planted medians, be it, you know, any of those roundabouts, because SCDOT has wanted us to look at it comprehensively as a whole city. In other words, if you slow it down here, people may choose to go there.
Right.
Does all this tie into that?
Yes.
I mean, is all this the work to satisfy, because I, I applaud SCDOT for asking us to do that.
It's, this is part of it.
So this action plan helped get us the Safe Streets For All Grant.
Right.
First phase of the Safe Streets For All Grant is a planning phase.
Okay.
That planning phase includes where, where road diets applicable, where can they be done, where should they be done, and where are we focused on moving cars?
Exactly. And, and if they're done, where do cars get diverted to?
Right. And that, that's the first piece of the Safe Streets For All.
Excellent.
Yes. So it's all, it all ties together.
I'm sorry. No, no, go ahead.
Councilmember Saul?
This is really cool. And it's been very exciting. Do you have, maybe, obviously, you're getting money in, you're getting federal money in, which is awesome. Do we have the resources, personnel-wise, to do these projects?
Yeah, we're, we're.
Are we contracting out?
We are. We're contracting some of the engineering work out. We do a majority of the construction management, administration, project management in-house. Nick mentioned the C-Fund, the one we just got. I think all of the projects except for maybe two are going to be shovel-ready projects. They're ready to go to construction already. So that's going to be huge. But yeah, I mean, I feel good where we are, resource-wise. We're, we're on the tail end of a lot of the DIB projects that had us a little bit underwater there for the first year and a half, two years. We're, we're in the construction phase and kind of seeing those projects, seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, if you will. Thank you for asking that. Good question.
And you may have said this, when do we think that plan is going to be ready?
The thoroughfare plan for.
Yeah, what we're talking about, where we're gonna, where we're gonna go diets and where we're not and all this stuff.
We have, we have five years from when we execute the agreement with federal highways to finishing the demonstration project. So probably the next two years, we'll have the planning piece done.
Okay. And the second question, I know we were looking at trying to sort of piggybacking on what Captain Stoll was asking. I know that we're trying to do a lot more of the actual construction ourselves, as opposed to contracting that out, particularly considering, you know, the, the, the cost of contracting that out. And it was good work for our employees. Where are we on that?
Well, we're, we talk regularly with Public Works. So Public Works, Dave, Derek, and Ben Carroll, they would be our construction arm, if you will, for, for doing a lot of projects. And, and they're, they're helping us with some sidewalk projects now. You know, we just have to look at the full scope of the work in context with everything else they're doing. We haven't extended discussions as far as looking at buying additional equipment or expanding the forces, resources, if you will, to, to take on more of that work, but it's always something.
When we have that, because, I mean, it seems like.
Well, as we enter, kind of are approaching another budget season, that, that would be the appropriate time to start having.
That's a topic that we can talk about during retreat. I think that that's a topic that would be something where we could have a little more time to get into those details that.
Okay. I know, I know Dave Derrick's got some good ideas on, on their side of the equation of how, how they could facilitate more of that.
I mean, I'm just looking at all the projects that we're talking about doing, and it just makes, it seems to make sense that if we can figure out a way to do more of this stuff in-house, it just would be better for, better for our taxpayers, better for everyone.
We've seen, on, on that note, I mean, costs have gone up significantly over the last few years. We have seen them normalize somewhat. They're still higher than, you know, obviously where we were a few years ago, but at least they're not continuing to escalate.
Got you. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brazington?
I've got several questions. How, how many years out does your action plan go, current?
So we originally set a target date in 2035 of trying to, trying to reach a lot of these goals, but in a lot of seed, these strategies are strategies that we need to implement.
So you don't, you don't have an annual action plan? I'm thinking about, I'm a chair to pick one, but we saw almost phased into years, or at least districts, political districts of the city by Kalen Owens, you know, Trails and Greenways. You don't have anything of that level of organization yet?
So for this plan, it's more of a strategy to implement into our capital plan. Our capital plan is we're, we're waiting to see what happens with the penny in November. And that's one of the things we'll be talking about, I'm sure, at council retreat and moving on, once we know exactly where we are with the penny. And we were also waiting for last week's decision on the $7.5 million. So now that we have a better picture, we'll be able to basically try to get a three to five year.
Yeah, three to five year plan from capital.
My second question is now scratched. It was going to be, can we see your annual action plan?
It would.
While it makes sense to me to see a strategy be, well, third question is this. Remind us, if you will, the qualifying criteria for this effort of these strategies. Is it, is it volume on the street? Is it projected speed? Is it just what you said in the first slide, which is crash data?
So it's a, it has a lot to do with crash data and trying to, so there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of federal goals that go into trying to figure out where the most crashes happening and why. And then, once you figure out the why, how can we engineer it to, to prevent those from happening? And so a lot of it is data-driven, yes. But also, a lot of these strategies are strategies where even if we're doing a sidewalk project that's prioritized. that's prioritized for, because it came through the infrastructure bond or whatever it may be, we can still implement a lot of these strategies with those projects as well. So it doesn't have to be tied to, a project doesn't have to be specifically for this purpose. It can also be the other way around. We can take a project and filter it through these strategies to figure out how can we, how can we make each project better or safer?
Unless it just fits squarely and exclusively in another planning effort, which it might, the only thing that struck me is missing, I like how bus stops are in there. I kept waiting on the school zone slide. Now I recognize some schools are tucked off in neighborhoods. I equally recognize some schools are on busy streets. And that's one of the number one expressions of concerns I get about traffic and pedestrian alike is in and around school zones. So I thought there, you, you've referenced the Woodruff Industrial and Woodruff Road. I think at the time it was probably not, and it, it turned out to be that we tested it with water things, but kind of like what you just said about the linear poles, I'd love to see us max out every time it's appropriate, a pilot approach, whether it's for, you know, nothing gets the community interested in what you're doing than seeing it. And sometimes we see that when the concrete gets poured, it's like, shoot, missed the conversation a year ago. So that gives you an opportunity to engage and also test, like that a lot too. So I just encourage you to consider that at each and every opportunity. And my last, it's not really a question, it's just, maybe it's a curiosity question, but I was taking, you said forty-one percent of the streets are, usually what people say in those stats are like seventy, eighty, or ninety. I wonder if you extrapolate that further, do you actually see like seventy, eighty, ninety percent of the crashes are from ten percent of the streets? My hunch is if you went beyond the less than five percent of the miles to like less than ten percent, you're going to almost see all the crashes in the city. Is that, is that your hunch, your knowledge?
Probably, but I'd have to look at.
Okay, and that just takes you back to the STANTEX study we did, because I think what we found is this many streets, you're really talking about the usual suspects, so.
And that's where it was the high injury network and the pedestrian safety action plan. They both narrowed it down to a list of streets and a lot of those streets overlap.
They're common, yeah.
They're, they're almost the exact same.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Clint. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, guys.
Chief Thompson. We are fortunate to have members of our traffic enforcement team here this afternoon. So good to see y'all and have y'all here today. So Chief, you want to introduce everybody?
I do, I do.
I've been looking forward to this presentation for six weeks when we start talking about this thing.
Mayor and Pass, I want to, I'm excited to be able to present to you our traffic team. So these are the ones when y'all filtered to me speeding complaints, traffic complaints. This is actually the team that goes out and does the work and they do excellent work and do a really good job. So let me introduce them, Lieutenant Mark Olbrooks. Smile Travis. Sergeant Travis Pearson. Tommy Moore, better known as Mustang Tommy, if y'all seen the black Mustang running around. Clayton Anderson, Joseph Dozpat, Jacob Robinson, Michael Gabrielli, Kraft, Andrew Kraft, and Peter Harding. So this is our whole, this is our traffic team. They are one light. We usually run eight officers or we have eight slots for them. But as we get officers in and get them trained and we're able to keep them, keep them filled up. But this team does a great job. And we just wanted to highlight some of the work they do and go over some of the numbers and give you examples of accidents they work, because you probably don't, you hear about them on the news, but y'all don't necessarily see them. And so I wanted y'all to, just to highlight some of the things they, they do. So they are the selective enforcement team. They get directed on where to patrol and what to, you know, what the problem is, a lot through me, through y'all, as I get, get complaints, also through Greenville Cares, through neighborhood concerns, through our neighborhood meetings. And so they go out and, and do the enforcement that we see there. They also respond to collisions, a lot of collisions, and any collision that, that is involving a, a really bad injury or, or death, they, they work all of those. So this is just some of the tools. We call it their tools, right? We got our Mustangs, Ford Explorers, and Interceptors. If y'all don't know, the police department's fading everything out to Ford Explorer packages. So we will pretty much be in all Ford Explorer packages after this year. This is what they do. They respond to all the collisions and they work, work traffic enforcement, just like Nick said. Same thing with this team. Their goal is to reduce collisions, reduce injuries, keep the roadway safe. This is to, some of the things we do, and I know each of you have had experiences because you call me and say, somebody complained about speeding on a road. This is two of the tools they use on the roadway to measure speed. It measures the number of people that actually use the roadway and their speeds. It also gives us important data like time of day and day of week, because what we notice is when we break down the data, there are certain days there's more speeding or certain times of day, there's more speeding. So maybe it's on the way to school, on the way home from work. You know, they're able to look at that and we know when to deploy our resources out there to, to control the, the traffic problems. Just, just giving you an idea of the collisions. So, so far this year, we worked forty-seven hundred collisions. Last year we worked fifty-seven hundred. We're going to be up this year. I was going to update you on from last month, from September, as you know, we had Helene came through. That gave us a, a number of more wrecks. So from 2023, we worked four hundred and fourteen wrecks and accidents in September. Last month we worked five hundred and eighteen, so it was a twenty-five percent increase. And so that will drive, we average about five hundred accidents a month just in the city of Greenville.
We've probably got data on how many of those occurred at traffic lights.
Yeah, so our number one, and I was going to point this out because Nick pointed, yeah, Nick pointed this out on controlling flow of traffic. That is very important because our number one causation factor is fail to yield right away. And a lot of times that's on a left turn, so they're turning left out of a place, crossing traffic, and, and they, they cause.
I was thinking about when signals were out during the hurricane.
Not, not too many.
Really?
It wasn't, it wasn't too bad.
Okay, I just heard sirens continuously. I thought that was y'all.
But yeah, that just gives you an idea of the collisions that, that we work. Citations, number of citations, so you'll see the total is fifty-six thirty-one for this year so far. You'll see what the traffic unit does. So they're writing about, just this small group is writing about fifty percent of our traffic citations, because that is their focus and, and they do a good job at that. As you know, our uniformed patrol officers, the other teams are out and they're focused on other things and answering the nine one ones and the other calls. And so this team takes care of the, handling a lot of the traffic.
Is that group warning soon?
No, so we actually wrote ninety-eight hundred warnings last year, on pace to do the same this year. So about, about ten thousand warnings also.
Can we jump back? I apologize. Last slide real quick. Citations. That's three year total citation?
Yes, sir, three years total, traffic citations, because we also do use citations for subcriminally offenses.
Plus ten thousand in warnings.
Plus ten thousand in warnings. That was, that's in a year. They also, they're heavily into the DUIs, you know, the department is. So this is, just gives you an idea of the number of DUIs we do a year. Callouts, so they get called out, like I say, to a number of, of things. I'm going to give you examples of that, but mainly accidents that are questionable if somebody has got serious bodily injury or death. And then this is the number of fatal on the right that they've worked. So we've already worked eleven this year. We've been very lucky. Some of the wrecks that they've worked were lucky they weren't fatalities. Example of something they did that's not to the norm, if y'all remember this plane crash in 2018, you go to the next one so they can see the picture of the plane. It went off the runway at the end. It will end up, you can see where it's rested on the roadway, blocking the roadway. So NTSB asked them to map the scene. They use a number of tools. They use a total station for mapping the scene, also drones to map scenes. And so our traffic unit went out, mapped this scene for them so that they could clear the, the roadway and get the, get the plane out of there. So just an example of, of some of the work they do. These guys are really considered experts in their field around here and they're requested by Highway Patrol, County, other agencies, NTSB, things like that to come, come assist them. We have really good equipment, thanks to y'all, you know, supporting them and getting them what they need. And so they're, they're top notch on that. The next one is a sled assist because Spartanburg County was involved and they needed somebody to come there. And Highway Patrol was also involved, so they needed somebody outside that area to do this. And they mapped the scene of this accident and you'll see these, that's, I just want y'all to see what they see when they get there, because they, they work the worst of the worst accidents.
When was that?
That was nineteen, I believe. I believe it's nineteen. You probably remember this one. This is in 2020, the quadruple fatality on North Main Street. It was a BMW speeding, lost control, went up and hit a tree. And you'll see the car here that was just totally destroyed. Five people in the car and four of them deceased.
Those were teenagers, wasn't it?
It was, they, they were on, yes. So here's where they worked a wrong way driver. You'll see the two pictures of the two vehicles. Trucks going the wrong way and basically hit a car head on and it, as it did, it used their vehicle as a ramp and it flipped the truck over. But it was heavy speeds and high speeds and a lot of damage. You'll see the car in a second. So this is the one, if you just saw this on the news, this is the one we just worked. They just worked. This is one, I'll give you an example, that we are lucky that nobody died in this collision, but a single car accident on 385 running a hundred and five miles an hour. They know that from downloading the black box. So one of the things they use is the Bosch downloader. And so they can download most black boxes on cars to get the information off, off of it and see all the points that the car has programmed into it. So we know this vehicle was going a hundred and five miles an hour, four seconds prior to the impact, because we know impact, because airbags come out and other, other things like that. Two of the passengers were ejected from the vehicle. There was an eleven month old in the car, luckily strapped in properly in the car. But you'll see this car, it split the car, it threw the engine across the highway. A point I'd like to make on this, to some of Nick's point and, and what Clint said. So with our new traffic management center, we had to, as you can imagine, hold traffic on 385. We had to in fact turn people around and get them off of 385 so we could start working the scene. And so they were able, traffic engineers were able to go in that new traffic management center and start opening up intersections and getting traffic flowing freely. And they actually did this kind of just in sync with what we were doing. And it really helped relieve traffic so that it didn't impact anybody's day to, to a great extent. So it was a good job, good teamwork. And it's just, you know, that highlights that traffic management center and what you can do just from going in there and sitting there and controlling the intersections. But they did, did a really good job and I'd like to commend them, you know, for that, because it, it worked.
They sure did, Chief, because there was a thought that this, that the highway would be closed, 385 would be closed for hours, and it was hardly closed at all because of the work of this team. And so I want to make sure that that's noted, because that was incredible work. Because it was on a Friday morning, if I remember correctly.
That's right.
That's right. Okay, all right. Before we go into questions, Chief, anything else?
No, we'll take any questions. I've got the team here. If I can answer, they will, they will be glad to answer.
So now's a good time to speed in the city.
No, no, it's not. All right, Councilmember Brazington?
How much of the management center, how much is human intervention required to do what you just described when an unexpected accident happens and you then need to figure out ways to create efficient routes? I guess really why I'm asking, I hadn't, hadn't thought about that important role being played by this intentional center. But if I'm just a guy driving around town trying to figure it out and I ask Siri to take me somewhere, I'm counting. Make sure Siri's going to try to talk to me. Is there a lot of that AI or that type of thing embedded in the current capabilities? Or do we really have to real time look and flip switches? And, and you may not, yeah, as I say, you may not be able to answer that.
So majority of what we're doing right now would be somebody physically going in and controlling those signals from the traffic management.
Like the eyes in the sky type thing?
We're here, Scott. There are adaptive systems out there and we do have an adaptive system on a portion of Woodruff Road. Section of Woodruff Road that we don't maintain. But so there are adaptive technologies out there that can adjust to the fluctuating traffic volume. But for something like that where you're diverting interstate traffic onto the local road network, you've got to have.
Manual.
The change, the change you have to make in the signal timings to flush those cars around would require, it's better handled by an operator there, so.
Thanks. Paul, I got you. Let me update you on a couple, because you had sent me a couple and this is a good time to do it with the team here about Berdai and East Parkins Mill. So they've been out there really concentrating over the last month, hitting it as they do their, their areas. They're very data driven. Everything they do is about data. And so they get a report every month, our top ten intersections, our, our roadways where we have the most accidents. The roadway had the most accidents, just so you know, is 291. Six of the top ten intersections, 291. And then of course, like Berdai and Woodruff, that's a main intersection. But you could probably pick them out and that, those don't change much. Even over the past five years, we can, it's the same list. They might flip flop a little bit, but it's the same, same places.
Primarily South Pleasantburg.
Pleasantburg, yeah, Pleasantburg, kind of all of Pleasantburg has its, its hotspots. But for you, Councilmember Brazington, so Berdai, the, over the past month, they've written twenty-eight citations and nineteen warnings just for speeding. Now, what I will tell you is as they're out here doing speeding enforcement, they also get other things. Like for example, Councilmember DeWorten had passed on a Stone Avenue complaint. They went out there and worked that and they've written, they've written a lot of speeding tickets, actually nineteen on Stone and five warnings. But they also wrote fifteen red light violations and, you know, five blocking an intersection, because traffic backs up and they pull up, block the intersection. So as they're responding to these complaints we have for speeding, they're also getting other traffic violations. And then East Parkins Mill, twenty-two speeding tickets and seventeen warnings during, during the past month. So they've been concentrating on some of those, but I know, I remember getting those couple from, from you.
Thank you, guys. I'm just, I'm just the voice of the people. It's nice. So much me being the sticker. Appreciate the efforts.
What do y'all think about the trap, the speed limit signs with telling you how, how fast you're going? Everybody, we, we seem to like those. I'm just curious what these guys think then. They are.
Speed indicator.
Radar.
I think they're, they're good as long as people understand that we don't use it for enforcement. I think it brings attention to how fast you're traveling and hopefully will give people a note and slow down.
So I think people get confused by thinking that we can enforce from. Yeah. It, it's also a little bit of, you know, misnomer, if you will, like they will, let's say it's thirty-five. Well, it flashes thirty-six and so somebody in the north versus, they're speeding. We are not going to write somebody for thirty-six. They see thirty-seven, thirty-eight. We're not stopping cars for, for three miles over the speed limit. And they'll say, oh, we just saw ten cars speed. Well, they were only going up to three miles over the speed limit, so.
Councilor Dow and then Councilor Brazington.
This, this may involve Clint more than Chief, but I'm curious, as these corridors begin to develop, so 291, we have a vision of it developing. And we know one of the big safety concerns is, are all these access points. Does the code speak towards closing some of those off? In other words, you showed a picture of Lake Forest that had four access points along it. Somebody comes along and says, I want to redevelop that, that property. Would they, with SC DOT and with their plan, would those access points have to be addressed?
Yes. SC DOT access management guidelines would require those, those to be modified. Our code does address it as well. And then the bigger, one of the big things in our code is requiring cross-access easements across parcels. So joining parcels, sharing access points and connecting their driveways and parking lots. So that's another big thing in our code. But DOT access management guidelines would require, it, it, it will clean up some of these access points, called redevelopment.
Councilmember Brazington?
Just had a, there's more question of curiosity, but it is the cross-section of engineering and enforcement. Talking about the signs that we don't enforce all of, but, but many of those signs, if not all, I think, I think many, you know, we, we retrieve the data from where we can, where we see the eighty-fifth percentile. How often, if at all, is there proactive like analysis of that data versus reactive? You know, like versus somebody saying, I want to see the data? And then that relay to the enforcement side, not to act upon historical stuff, but to say, hey, look, these signs are measuring some change in speed in this area, therefore it might be time for a shift? My, my hunch is it probably doesn't change a lot over time, but do we ever think about doing that?
Yeah, we do it pretty regularly. We, we reach out and Sergeant Pearson works with them a lot and pulls data. If we get a complaint on the street and we know there's a sign there, we get that and look at it and we look at it by day of the week, time of day, and see if there is a, is a problem. But a lot of times it's one or two people speeding through and they see those cars and say there's a speeding problem. But the eighty-fifth percentile, many times that we pull is below the speed limit. So it, it doesn't, it's not indicative of a, of a traffic issue, of a speeding issue.
Got you.
Councilmember Dow?
Another last question. As a deterrent, you can write them a ticket that ties to money, right? Roughly, how, what percent of people who are given a ticket that involves a financial penalty appear in court to?
Write the ticket?
Yeah, I hate to use the word argue it, but what I'm, what I'm getting, contest, that's the word I was looking for. What I'm getting at is I assume it's these gentlemen that have to be in court when they know someone's appearing in court.
That's right. That's right.
How smoothly is that running? And I, you know, for them to be in court, if the tickets upheld or waived, whatever, that's not when they're on the street. How are things going?
Yeah, so they each have their own court time and then they write a number of tickets. How many of y'all do a session now? Is it 50, 40? So they can do 75 a court session and that's their court session. So the other officer's on the, you know, on the road at the time. When that officer's coming out, another one's coming in. Uh, most officers don't have that number, but the traffic officers do because of the number that they write.
Anybody want to hazard a guess at how many are contested percent wise?
Probably 60%.
60%. People show up at municipal court to contest.
Yeah, they feel like if they show up, clean their case, that they will get more help.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's not really, it's the difference between contest and show up.
Ken, I know this will not surprise you, but I have walked in. And you are, that is not, this is not my first rodeo. So instead, contest being a strong word, showing up to say I'm sorry. Some people do too.
Yeah.
But I just, 60% is high.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Can we, can we please give our hand to our.
Yeah, thank, yeah, deserve it. Thank y'all and thanks for the presentation. I ju, I just would raise this briefly because it, I've, it comes routinely with my constituents. Um, I think everybody understands and agrees, there's no differing opinion I'm aware of, that we enforce and we engineer to achieve safer streets. Oh. But I can see there, there appears to be always this philosophical question, to what extent do we enforce and invest in the enforcement effort versus the engineering effort? And I don't know that they're in society, much less Greenville is a, is an answer to that, but I'd like to see us continuously talk about that. Cause I know the effort's real and good and same with Clint and Nick, but it costs real money and it delivers real results. And I'd love to keep seeing, you know, how, how we're getting ROI for that. And one of the most common things I get from people is, why don't y'all quote unquote enforce more before you jump to engineering? And I'm not saying that's a factual or accurate statement. I'm just saying that's a perception, you know? And so I think the more we can hear good reports from real work like this and balance it, we can take it out there and share with the public, the real, the real dynamic.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's why we wanted, um, the team to be here today, so you can hear exactly all of the work that they're doing and the kind of work that they're doing. Cause I'm not sure that people know all of the things that they do for us. All right. Thank you. Going to move on to executive session, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Motion please.
Some moved.
Second. Okay, what we have here. That's moved.
Historic buildings. Schedule of development, security personnel. Update on a personnel matter, schedule of appointment of personnel.
How do we get to this perpetual state of like 14 executives?